بسم الله الرحمن الرحيم السلام عليكم ورحمة الله وبركاته You are very brave people. I know the day started with Tahajjud and Namaz-e-Fajr and then all day activities and still Masha Allah, I can see you are fully awake, fully attentive. I am truly humbled and very pleased that I am here. Once again, I am thankful to Mukaram Amatram Sadar Sahib, who gave me this very honoured opportunity. When I asked Hazoor that I am going to USA, any message for Khudamul Ahmadiya, so Hazoor said, "Give my Salaam." So, once again, I will say from Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen ayadahullah ta'ala bin as-sir laziz, "Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh." When I narrate and relate some incidents and events when I spoke to, when I met Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen ayadahullah ta'ala bin as-sir laziz, it gives the impression that I am someone who can always see Hazoor any time I like or as many times as I like. I would like to clarify that like all Ahmadi's, I am a very humble and very ordinary person. In United Kingdom, Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen ayadahullah ta'ala bin as-sir laziz, he is so much busy, he is so much busy that even I have seen ministers, I have seen Member of Parliament, I have seen dignitaries waiting for their turn for months and months to meet Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen ayadahullah ta'ala bin as-sir laziz. So, same is the case with me. Only Mukaram Amatram Private Secretary Sahib is the person he can see Hazoor very often. Otherwise, every single person, he has to wait for his turn. So if you are thinking that I can meet Hazoor any time, whenever I can, so I will apologize that if you are thinking that I am a big man. Like every ordinary Ahmadi person, a true, a humble Member of Jamaat-e-Ahmadiyah, of course, we have to, I mean, seeing even people living in Fazal Mosque, I mean, in the area of Fazal Mosque where Hazoor resides, it is honour for them to meet and to see Hazoor. With these few words, I will narrate few events, few times when I had honour to speak to Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen ayadahullah ta'ala bin as-sir laziz. But before I do so, let me tell you that I am talking about that person, about whom I think, and not only think, I am 100% sure that Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen ayadahullah ta'ala bin as-sir laziz, although he is the most extra-ordinary person I have ever come across, at the same time, he is the most humble man on the earth. He is the most forgiving person on the earth and he is the kindest person on the earth I have ever met. Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen ayadahullah ta'ala bin as-sir laziz, you know, after Ishtamaa, the organizers and the participants after Ishtamaa and after Jalsas, everyone is so much tired, so much so that some members, they cannot go to their work straight after and they have to take rest for one day or two days. I have seen Hazoor very closely and trust me, Hazoor's every day is like Jalsa Day. Hazoor's every day is like Ishtamaa Day. He is so busy, he is so busy that from Namaz-e-Tahajjud to Namaz-e-Isha, we see him working, working and working for the betterment of Members of Jamaat-e-Ahmadiyah. So, sometime, I spoke to Private Secretary Sahib, I took his interview, I took the interview of Mukaram Amir Sahib, Jamaat-e-Ahmadiyah UK, about the daily life of Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen ayadahullah ta'ala bin as-sir laziz. And all of them, they say that this is beyond the comprehension of any human being to understand how Hazoor can perform so many works in one day. Every day Hazoor receives about 2,000 to 2,500 letters from across the world. Every day Hazoor, early in the morning, his meeting starts with the officials or head of the departments. Hazoor meets them, gives them guidance. People, they seek his holiness guidance. In the evening, about 25 to 35, 30 families, they meet Hazoor. And when I say 30 families, if in one family there are five members, this means 150 people. And all 150 people, they come out with smiling faces. It's not that they go there and Hazoor just talk to one person. Everyone comes out and he thinks that Hazoor loves him the most. And then five prayers and then meeting the guests from all over the world and dignitaries and so many other things which obviously at this time I am not, I mean, time will not allow me. Today, I will talk about two, I mean, there are so many aspects about the blessed personality of Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen ayadahullah ta'ala bin as-sir laziz. Today, I would like to discuss, I would like to say a few things about Hazoor's. One thing is how humble Hazoor is. Second thing about the blessed memory which Allah Ta'ala has given to our beloved Imam. And third thing is that how Hazoor is connected to the whole Jamaat through the letters of prayers which you write to Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen ayadahullah ta'ala bin as-sir laziz. This topic is very close to my heart. Honestly, I can speak on and on on this topic. So I will request Sadar Sahib to please whenever you want me to stop because this is a topic. Although I am not good in talking in English, but still I have seen Hazoor so closely that I love to narrate such things. So Sadar Sahib, when time is over, please do let me know. First of all, now, I was told that I need to say this thing in English. I took some notes, I wrote in English and now I cannot read my own English. Honestly, so that's why I am just going papers through this and that. In Urdu, things keep coming. In English, of course, I have to think. Honestly, I can't read what I wrote, okay. So, I will just say spontaneously whatever comes to my mind. If I, let's start with the memory of Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen ayadahullah ta'ala bin as-sir laziz. I believe and I have very strong belief, firm belief that no computer on the earth can hold so much data, can save so much data which Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen ayadahullah ta'ala bin as-sir laziz, he remembers. He exactly knows that in which area of Jamaat, what is happening at the moment. And to my amazement, you know, these videos, these programs, whenever I go and I try to report to Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen ayadahullah ta'ala bin as-sir laziz, Hazoor already knows about this thing. I have never ever understood. Hazoor said, "I have seen your, that clip in which you were saying this," and I am amazed. Once I was in Sweden and I thought that this time I will report before anyone else. So next morning, I mean, from Sweden, we flew to United Kingdom and I went to see Hazoor and I said, "Hazoor, yesterday I was in Sweden and we held mushaira there and I want to report about this." And Hazoor said, "Yes, I know in that mushaira, Mr. so-and-so, he got appreciation and dad and Mr. so-and-so, he did not get any dad. Okay, what else you want to tell me?" I said, "Hazoor, I just wanted to say this thing, but how comes you know everything beforehand?" So this is how, even once I spoke to Amir Sahib, I asked him that, Amir Sahib said that, "Mubarak, there is one thing very strange. Whenever I go to give some glad tidings, are any news to Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen ayadahullah ta'ala bin as-sir laziz?" Hazoor already knew that and this thing I cannot understand. I went to Private Secretary Sahib. I said that, "Motram Amir Sahib," he says this thing,[745.28][745.68]"How comes? Do you tell Hazoor everything before Amir Sahib's come?" And Private Secretary Sahib, he literally, he laughed. He said that, "Mubarak, even I don't know this thing, that how Hazoor knows everything, even sometime I go to tell something to Hazoor and Hazoor says that, 'Yes, I already know that.'" And Private Secretary Sahib said, "This is only because he is a man of God. He has a connection with Allah Ta'ala and he has connection with the Members of Jamaat-e-Ahmadiyah." So people, they do report each and everything to their beloved Imam. Once, I, so first of all, I will talk about Hazoor's memory. Sadar Sahib, once I went to see Hazoor and Hazoor said that, "Did you write something new?" I said, "Yes." And you know, when Hazoor was, I mean, I was meeting Hazoor, Hazoor was checking his letters and Hazoor was signing as well. In the daytime, there are two Mulkats. One is at daytime. Daytime, Jamaat, Odeedar are office holders. They go to seek Hazoor's advice. So it was daytime. So Hazoor was seeing, at that time, Hazoor keeps seeing letters and continues giving instructions and plus he is meeting Hazoor Members. So Hazoor said, "Okay, if you have written something new, please read out." I read one Nazn, "Visale yaar ko jana to ho ke ba wazu jana. Mujasam baadab rehna sarha pa arzu jana. Nigahay yaar vo shay hai jo zarre ko bhi zar kar de." So, I thought that Hazoor is not listening because Hazoor was like seeing his letters and then Hazoor said, "Okay, finished, okay, jazakallah." And I was sure that Hazoor, he just wanted to encourage me. Hazoor has not listened to my poem. And next year, I was going to Mulkat. So, I had not written any poem. So I put the same poem in my pocket. I said, "Because last time Hazoor didn't listen." So, in that Mulkat, Hazoor said, again Hazoor was busy seeing letters. Hazoor said, "Okay, you have something new." I said, "Yes." And Hazoor said, "Okay." And I said, "Hazoor arz kiya hai ke visale yaar ko jana to ho ke ba wazu jana." Hazoor said, "Hang on, you read it out to me last year." I said, "Hazoor, I thought that you had not heard it." Hazoor said, "No, no, 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 I had heard that." So this is how Hazoor remembers each and every everything. Some of you sitting here, you might think that I met Hazoor, Hazoor must have forgotten or Hazoor will not know that I am son of that person or of that. Hazoor exactly knows. The only thing is Hazoor is very busy and he does not mention everything. Once, about two, three months before a program, I wrote to Hazoor a letter that, "Hazoor, we are holding that program. Can you please kindly come bless us in that program?" Hazoor said, "You do that program, I will try to come." I said, "Okay." So I saved that letter. At least, you know that Hazoor has written that I will try to come. After three months, when there were three days left, I went to see Hazoor and and you know our style, you know our style. We try our best that somehow our other Hazoor comes to our program. And I said, "Hazoor, I had written a letter to you about our program and Hazoor had said that I will come." Hazoor said, Hazoor smiled. Hazoor said, "I did not say I will come. I had said, 'I will, I will try to come.'" So Hazoor exactly remembers what he says and what he writes. Do not ever think that Hazoor, what Hazoor told you like five years ago, Hazoor has forgotten that. It is not that. Hazoor will remember each and everything. One day, there was, you know, again daytime Mulkats. I had program about 1 o'clock. I had to go for Intaqabe Sughan. And normally daytime Mulkats, they can be either one minute Mulkat with one person or it can be half an hour Mulkat because, I mean, sometime there can be Imam Sahib or different Omraz of different countries. When I reached there, my number was 15th and I was really worried. It was like 11 o'clock. I was worried that 12 o'clock, I have to reach to studio and my number is 15th. So, but I kept quiet. Of course, out of respect, you cannot say anything that, "Please put my number first because I have to do that program." When you are meeting Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen ayadahullah ta'ala bin as-sir laziz, nothing is important. So the person before me, it was Mukaram Amatram Majid Tahir Sahib, additional Wakil Tabshir. He went in and we, about 15 people who were outside, my number was almost at the last. So, after, when Majid Tahir Sahib, when he went in, it, I mean, it took about like 25 minutes. So I got really panicked. I said that 12 o'clock, I have to reach to the studio. So I was planning that I should ring to them and tell them that, "Look, this is the situation. So can you please arrange someone else today? I cannot come." To my amazement, second number, I was called. And when I went in, Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen ayadahullah ta'ala bin as-sir laziz very graciously said that when I saw the list, I just realized that you have to reach to the studio. So I have called you before then, before other people. Now, this is a person who is so much busy. He keeps, he remembers each and every detail. Once I wrote to Hazoor that, "Hazoor, I want to have Mulkat." Hazoor wrote on the letter, "I am very busy. Try next week." Next week, I wrote again that, "Hazoor, last week I had requested and Hazoor's irshad was to try next week. So I am writing, so kindly give me permission." So Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen ayadahullah ta'ala bin as-sir laziz, he wrote on the letter that, "I am very busy. I don't have time." So I felt very sad. But again, I felt honoured. I felt honoured that it's second time I have written and Hazoor has written, "I don't have time." There must be a reason. There must be, of course, Hazoor is busy. This is one reason anyway. But there must be one reason, another reason that Hazoor is not allowing me to meet him. So I kept quiet and four, five months passed. United Kingdom Jalsa came, then Germany Jalsa came and then Hazoor. I think he came to America or Canada and then long, long time passed. Even I kept quiet. I was praying that Hazoor forgets this thing. Everyone forgets this thing in the office of Private Secretary Sahib that Hazoor refused twice. So I was praying that Hazoor may forget everything and after five or six months, when I went to see Hazoor with my family on routine Mulkat, which is family Mulkat in the evening, when I entered into the office, Hazoor was standing comparatively closer to the door. Normally Hazoor is next to the chair, next to his chair, but Hazoor was standing comparatively closer to the door. When I went in, Hazoor held my hand and I did Salaam and I thought that now Hazoor will let me sit. Hazoor asked my wife and children to have a seat and Hazoor kept holding my hand. Hazoor said that few months ago, you had written letter. I said, "Try next week." You wrote next week and I wrote this that I am very busy and after that I became busy, but I remembered you all the time. When I came back from Jalsas, I asked Private Secretary Sahib that, "Did Mubarak write again for Mulkat?" So can you believe a person who has so, I mean, hundreds and thousands of followers, people who love him so much, but still Hazoor would remember about a very, very, very ordinary person that he had written for Mulkat and I had refused and Hazoor was kind of waiting. Now, this is the love and kindness and affection of Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen ayadahullah ta'ala bin as-sir laziz for everyone, for ordinary, of course, in the eyes of Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen ayadahullah ta'ala bin as-sir laziz, no one is ordinary. Every Ahmadi is equal for Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen ayadahullah ta'ala bin as-sir laziz. About a month ago, I went to see Hazoor. I said, "Hazoor, this has been, it's been about 15 years since you became Khalifa. Is there any khutbah-e-juma which you missed? Because there are sometimes when it is like snowing and going out is not even possible. Sometime it happens that Hazoor race from a long, long journey from Australia and of course due to jet lag and due to tiredness, of course, one can miss. Sometime one is not well. And I asked Hazoor that in last 15 years, Hazoor, have you ever missed any Namaz-e-Juma, Khutbah-e-Juma? Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen ayadahullah ta'ala bin as-sir laziz said that this is just by the grace of Allah that in last 15 years, I have not missed even one khutbah. My second question was Sadar Sahib. I said that sometime one is not well. Sometime one has fever. Sometime one can have sore throat. Sometime one can have like, you know, not feeling going out. So Hazoor, I said that, "Hazoor, aapko kabhi bhukar nahi hota? Mainne ka Hazoor, aapka kabhi gala kharaab nahi hota? Ke aap kahen ke aaj maine nahi jana hai?" Yes, Hazoor, do you never get fever or sore throat or feeling that you cannot go out? Hazoor smiled. And you know the beautiful wording. Now listen the wording. A person I know, I have seen ministers, I have seen Members of Parliament standing and waiting for long, long time to see Hazoor. Such a person, listen what he said. Hazoor ne faramaya, Hazoor ne kaha ke mubarak, maine bada maamuli qism ka aadmi hu, maine muzdur qism ka aadmi hu. Mujhe bhi sab kuch hota hai lekin maine apne kaam jarri rakhta hu. Hazoor said, when I asked him that, "Hazoor, you never get fever or sore throat or pain that you go every week, like one hour, you have to stand up?" So Hazoor said that, "I am a very ordinary person. I am like a laborer. I do get all these symptoms which you are seeing, but I do continue my work." Once, Hazoor was going to do inspection of, you know, Jalsa Salana duties. And Hazoor, you know, when Hazoor goes for Jalsa Salana inspection duties, Hazoor has to go like Masjid Fazal, Baitul Fathu, Jamay Ahmediyah and Hadika Tul Mahdi. And Hazoor goes to each and every department and speaks to the, you know, duty in charge or Members. So Hazoor walks with a very like brisk walk. It's not easy to walk with Hazoor. So when Hazoor came to Hadika Tul Mahdi, I thought that today I should go with Hazoor. Of course, not in his kafla, which is a proof kafla, but just few, few meters behind. So I was walking behind Hazoor's kafla, going one place, second place, third place, fourth place, fifth. I was trying to keep pace with Hazoor. Hazoor was going very, very fast. Hazoor was meeting people, greeting people, giving instruction, checking, you know, booty, is it okay to eat, checking namak, moshan. After like half time, I gave up. I got tired because Hazoor was walking very fast. So I said, "Okay, next year, InshaAllah, rest of the, rest I will do." After three, four days, I had the honour to sit with Hazoor and we were having meal together. Of course, I don't get this opportunity very often. Maybe I think so far, only three, four times I had this honour that on the table, I had chance to sit with Hazoor. And so when Hazoor was having his meal, of course, during meal, Hazoor sometime tells me very, very lovely jokes. Hazoor is in a very good mood. So I asked Hazoor that, "Hazoor, I try to walk with you." And on that day, I had very bad pain in my legs. So maine ka Hazoor, aapko kabhi tangoon me darshard nahi hoti hai Hazoor? You are so strong, Masha Allah. Don't you get pain in your legs when you walk so much? Hazoor said, Hazoor smiled. Hazoor ne kaha ke maine lohe ka nahi bana huwa. Mujhe bhi darth hoti hai. Mujhe bhi darth hoti hai, lekin main apne kam jarri rakhata hu. Hazoor said that "I'm not made of iron, I do get pain, but I continue my duties." Now this is our Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen, Ayyadah Allahot Allah bin Aslaziz. You know, Qaideen and Sadr Mahallahs, those who are sitting here, you know that a Sadr Mahalla, a president of a Alka, it is not possible for him to meet and greet everyone with, with a smiling face. He, even a Sadr Mahalla, he does not know everyone by his name. Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen, Ayyadah Allahot Allah bin Aslaziz, he has to supervise two hundred and twelve countries. Their Umaras, their Sadr Khudamul Ahmadiyas, their Sadr Ansarullah, they write their suggestion and they seek their guidance and all the time Hazoor is giving them guidance and instruction. Now I will just narrate one last thing. After that if you have any question, you may ask. You know, how Hazoor, this is, this is what we think, you know, when we are sitting in America or in Pakistan, or India, or in remote areas of the world Australia, we think that when our letter goes to Hazoor, maybe only Private Secretary Sahab reads and he signs and this. This thing I will tell you, I have never, ever understood. I tried to investigate, I tried to interview Private Secretary Sahab. I tried to ask Hazoor on many occasions, how it is possible? Each and every letter, two thousand letters, Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen, Ayyadah Allahot Allah bin Aslaziz, he reads. And nobody knows at what time. People, they do think that when we write letter, it is just a formal answer that yes, we have received. I'll give you rather two examples. Once, in my post of Intahab Isukhan, I received an envelope on that it was written Mubarak Siddiqui Intahab Isukhan. I opened it and inside the letter was for Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen, Ayyadah Allahot Allah bin Aslaziz. It was written by a girl. By mistake, I think she must have written two letters and she put wrong letter into the envelopes. So when I opened it, it was addressed to Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen, Ayyadah Allahot Allah bin Aslaziz. And the girl, she has written, she had written her married life story and it was so painful, so painful, that how she was living in her in-laws, how difficult her life was, that honestly, I could not sleep for like two or three days, that why someone is so, in so much difficulty. When I got the chance to see Hazoor, I went to Hazoor and I said "Hazoor, by mistake I opened a letter." And in that letter, a girl, she had written that this, 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 she had written. And Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen, Ayyadah Allahot Allah bin Aslaziz said, "is it that girl from that city, from that town? Are you talking about that girl?" Hazoor exactly knew about which person I was talking about. This is how Hazoor reads letter, letters. And Hazoor exactly knows that in which home, which girl is unhappy, in which area, which Khadim is doing an excellent work, in which area, which person is not reading Namaz. Hazoor loves to forgive people, but Hazoor do know all these things. I had mentioned this thing, that once I met a friend of Hazoor. A friend and Khadim of Hazoor who lived with Hazoor from the age of his childhood, he was like five years or six years old. From when his parents from village, they sent him to Hazoor's home and he and Hazoor used to go to school together. So he was, he is a friend of Hazoor from there, he has this honour. So, vey Urdu ka shere hai na ke humne usko yaar jana, jisko dekha yaare dost. When we see that this person is friend of Hazoor or Hazoor loves him, of course we love him. So I took time from him, I said "I want to sit with you and I want to listen about Hazoor's childhood and how Hazoor's life is." One thing he said, he said once Hazoor was unwell. And it was not Hazoor's office, it was somewhere else, maybe it was Hazoor's room or somewhere, he did not mention. He said Hazoor was unwell. But still Hazoor was reading the letters sent by the members of Jamaat Ahmadiya. And Hazoor was writing with his own hands. And Hazoor said to him, "can you pass me this pile of letters?" So he said that "I picked the pile of letter with little bit carelessness." And he said that Hazoor's wordings were, now he said that "I cannot remember the exact words", but he said that Hazoor, he thinks that Hazoor said, "Ihtiyat se, ihtiyat se, yeh hat nahi, yeh mere dil hai." Please pick them up, pick these letters carefully, these are not letters, these are my hearts. This is how Hazoor loves the members of Jamaat Ahmadiya. This is how Hazoor reads your letters in detail. The only thing is, that of course Hazoor cannot meet eighteen crore people or twenty crore people, what he does, every Khutbah Juma is the answer of those thousands and thousands and thousands of letters. And I will, last incident I'll tell you, that how carefully Hazoor reads letter. And this is not one, twice, I can give you one hundred examples, that when your letter goes, do not think that Hazoor will not read that. And this is the beauty of Jamaat Ahmadiya, that every person, he may be a doctor or he may be a laborer, he may be a bricklayer, he is equal for Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen, Ayyadah Allahot Allah bin Aslaziz. I'll tell you how Hazoor reads letters in detail. So there's some, we, some friends, we were sitting together and a friend said that "look, a beautiful deal of Morocco is there, flight, hotel and you know, going to places, all one package and so cheap. And it was so cheap and so attractive and five star hotel, that everyone sitting there, they said "yes, please book it for us." And you know that, that deal had time, the time is going, price is going up and we all booked that deal, that okay Mashallah, we are going to Morocco, five star hotel, nice flight, everything, nice meal, one week, going to places. So we booked that and we were about sixteen, seventeen members. We have their TI College Old Student Association, Talimul Islam College Old Student Association. And luckily I'm this president of that association, so I gave the decision that okay, book that and we sixteen people will go. Now in those sixteen people, they are members of National Majlis Hayamlah, members of Khudamul Ahmadiya National Majlis Hayamlah and some other important people. After few days, I realised that because I'm taking so many important pe- people with me in one flight to Morocco and of course Majlis Shura is very close and that programme is very close, it should have been with the permission of Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen, Ayyadah Allahot Allah bin Aslaziz. And I was worried and then Amir Sahab, he asked me, Amir Sabiu K, he asked me that "Mubarak, you should have taken the permission of Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen, Ayyadah Allahot Allah bin Aslaziz before you book this flight, you are taking so many important people with you out of United Kingdom and there are so many important national programmes." So I really got scared. What to do now? I wrote a two pages letter. And you know, because I was little bit worried and the money we had paid and it was non-refundable, so I wrote, wrote letter. And you know, in the beginning of letter, I wrote very beautiful things. And just on the second page, in the middle I wrote one line that "Hazoor, we are going to Morocco, kindly give us permission." So in the beginning, I wrote beautiful things. "The Hazoor, by the grace of Allah, in Burkhina Fassaw we have made college and in Sawtoh May, a primary school is being made" and this and that and by the, so first page I filled with good news. On second page, in one line, I wrote that "Hazoor, we fifteen people are going to Morocco, kindly give us permission." After that, I wrote a long paragraph. "The Hazoor, please pray for us that Allah bless us with the best of both the worlds and we are the best members of Jamaat and Khuda hamay apni raza ki raon pe chalai." Or Hazoor, ab I was thinking, you know, that I will say, if any member asks me, "have you written letter to Hazoor?", I will say "yes, I have written it." So at least I will be absolve of this, um, this thingy. I sent this letter to Hazoor and now there were only two days left in going to Morocco and we were, everyone was happy, but I was worried, that how can I take people with, without the permission of Hazoor? So, no reply came. So I went to Private Secretary Sahab, I said "can I have Mulaqat with Hazoor?" He graciously said "okay" and I went to see Hazoor and again it was morning time and Hazoor was seeing the letters and everything, Hazoor is very busy, very busy. And again I said that "Hazoor, by the grace of Allah, we are doing this." Hazoor said "Jazakallah." I said "Hazoor, we have done this." Hazoor said "Jazakallah, Sholjazaa" and then and Hazoor was not telling me what I was trying to, you know, listen. At the end of the Mulaqat, I said "Hazoor, I had written a letter that we are fifteen people are going to Morocco after two days." Hazoor, I did not get any reply. And Hazoor remained busy. Hazoor said "yesterday I saw that letter, I have given my permission." And then Hazoor smiled and Hazoor said, "you had not asked for, for, you had not asked for permission, you had just given me information, that's it." And I was really taken aback. I said "Hazoor, please give me, tell me the secret of this thing, that how you read, what time do you read letters? Because we see you from Namaz, Fajar to Namaz, Ishaa, you are always busy, either meeting people or giving instruction. Rain or sunshine, you are coming for Namaz and we, you're full, like sixteen hours, eighteen hours, they are in front of people. What time do you read these letters?" Hazoor smiled, Hazoor said "you leave it." Hazoor ne faramaya, aap sirf mujhe yeh batae ke nahi, Hazoor exactly said the same words. Hazoor ne faramaya ke aap isko chhode. Aap yeh batae, aapne yeh likha tha ke nahi, ke flight bhi book ho gayi hai, hotel bhi book ho gayi hai, non-refundable hai, ijazat de de. So I said "yes, Hazoor, I had written this thing." Now this is one example, I can honestly tell you one hun- one hundred examples, that you write something to Hazoor and after two years you go back to Hazoor and you say that "Hazoor, I had said this." Hazoor will tell you the exact, exact wording of that and this is not only with me, to be very, very, very honest. Every single person, once I took one Khadim from, I was Qaidah Fazel Mosque. I took one Khadim, he came from USA. And after meeting me, he said "okay, I'm going to, back to USA." I said "please do meet Hazoor." He said "Mubarak Sab, you know, I'm a very ordinary man. I just stay back and unfortunately I do not get time to serve Jamaat. I'm a worldly man, I'm just busy in my work." So I do not, you know, he was so much hesitant. I said "well, Hazoor is so forgiving." Hazoor is so forgiving, that "don't worry, come with me" and I took him with me. And at the end of the Mulaqat, he said to Hazoor, "Hazoor, can you kindly give me a pen as a Tofa or Izaz or for it?" Hazoor smiled, Hazoor gave him pen and Hazoor said "what's your name?" He said his name. Hazoor said "okay", Hazoor smiled, Hazoor said "with this pen, what you are going to do?" He said "Hazoor, I will write letters to you for Dua." And you know what Hazoor said? Hazoor said "okay, mujhe zaroor likhna. Isse pehle to is naam ka kabhi koi hat nahi aya." Hazoor said "do write to me, but before this, I have never received a letter of Dua with this name." So my dear Khudam, if you think that, I know, most of you, you do write, but if you think that I do not write letter to Hazoor and who cares? Who knows that I'm not writing letter to Hazoor? Trust me, you should think again. Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen, Ayyadah Allahot Allah bin Aslaziz, he is blessed with this spiritual power, he is man of God. Honestly, again I will say, keep a very close and keep a very loving connection with Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen, Ayyadah Allahot Allah bin Aslaziz. And the blessings you will see, not only you, your generations and their generations will see that. And I'm sorry I had said this, this will be last incident, I will, I will like to say another thing with your permission. Mene Hazoor ko likha, acha asal main na angrezi me mujhe maza nahi aata sirji. Meri zubaan, chuke Urdu hai. Hamari asal me jo hum hote hai na Pakistan se aaye hue, hamari English bhi aisi hoti hai Sada Sabe. Bachon ko kami, bachon ki English badi zat, you know, your English is beautiful. You know how to tackle, rather you know, when you are doing Tabliq, you are more successful. We are not. You know, you, you know how to handle people. We use our own old style, you know, I'll just give you one example, how you can handle and how we handle people. Mashallah, aapke saath, you know, if you bring a young man with you who is not an Ahmadi, thik hai na? You know how to handle with, handle them. You will say "okay, oh bro, do you want coffee, tea, something?" You'll say "no, no, no, I'm alright." You say "okay." You know, this is your style, you let people be comfortable. We say "oh hello brother." Pehle to woh bandai confuse ho jata hai ke meri umr sola saal hai, yeh saath saal ka banda mujhe brother kyun kah raha hai? "Oh brother, how are you?" "No, no, no, you have to eat aloo gosh." This is something, you know, from the Langar Khan of Hazr, he doesn't know about Langar Khan and all that, you know. And we try to, on the very first day, humara, you, you guys, you are intelligent, you know. You say "what do you do?" "Oh, I'm in IT." You understand what, what IT is and then, you know, it's fine. Humara ke "what do you do brother?" "I am in IT." "Okay, but in IT..." IT okay but in IT what do you do when you go to your office please explain to me well I'm consultant oh you are a doctor oh you no 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 I'm not a doctor you know so we try to dig into on the very first day hum usse aise aise sawal karte hai ke jisse woh banda vaise hi dar jata hai ye koi ye koi CID ka banda to nahi hai brother what is your per month income oh five thousand pound you are rich man where do you keep this money oh you know woh woh dar jata hai banda ke yaar ye okay your mother father still together or separate separate now you know on the very first day we we try to prove that we are your best friend hum usse aise woh dar jata hai aapka acha hota hai oh mera aapki baatein bhi sachhi baat hai very modern you know how you have iPhone or this oh it's a crap you know this uh you got android system or no signals here okay yeah I love to go there my you know this coffee tea okay let's go to subway this uh aisi baatein jisse agle ko ek to isliye hume jab english bolte hai hamari english se baaz angrezen ko badi preshani hoti hai thik hai na to main urdu me vaquia batato hai ke maine acha ye wala vaquia aapne delete kar dena hai jo abhi maine bich me kaha hai na isko aap maine Hazoor ko xat likha ke Hazoor hum ek mushairah karna cha rehhi hai aur ji ye kya kah rahi hai ke khutum karva de
nahi nahi kah rahi hai
acha thik hai maine Hazoor ko xat likha ke Hazoor hum mehmood hal me ek mushairah karna cha rehhi hai aur hamari derkhasat hai ke Hazoor bhi usme tashif laaye to when I went to take that letter Hazoor ne bahut doai di huin thi bahut doai di huin thi lekin niche liye likha huwa tha ke meri macrufiyat hai main madrat chahta hu so humne badi itiyari ki huin thi hal ko itna sajaya huwa tha bahut lambi planning ki huin thi to jab Hazoor ki taraf se ye jawab aaya to of course I was very sad maine waha se ek kalm pakda kalm pen pakda aur maine usi vakat chanch ashar likh ke Hazoor ki khidmat me bijwaya maine upar likha ke Hazoor hum ne ye mushairah multab cancel kar diya hai kyu ke aage maine ashar jo mujhe yaad aage aage dengi agar maine kahi likhi thi ke uski qurbat ko humne pana tha uski qurbat ko humne pana tha baaki jo bhi tha sab bahana tha uski qurbat ko humne pana tha baaki jo bhi tha sab bahana tha main gadaagar tha uski galioon me uske qadmoon me ek zamana tha main bhi xamoosh ho gaya kyu ke uske ghar ke qarib thana tha so I wrote this and few more verses and I sent it to Hazoor and next day when I went to take the answer of that you know Hazoor with his own hands bahut khusurat Hazoor ne likha huwa tha ke mere ghar ke qarib koi thana nahi hai aap mushairah rakle main usme a raha so alhamdulillah this we are so blessed you know Hazrat Akhdas Masih Maoud alaihisla wa salaam Hazoor ne farmaya hai sidh se meri taraf aao isi me khair hai hai darinde harr taraf main aafiyat ka hu hisaar come to me with the full purity of your hearts I there are so I mean the world is full of wild animals and I am the employer of safety so these days Khalifa waqt Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen ayah allah talab bin aslaziz he is the employer of safety those who will keep a close connection with Hazoor Insha Allahu Lazzis they will and then generations will they will be successful or jo aaj koi agar ye sochye ke yaar ye pa bondiya hai main to bahut larned aadmi hu main to bahut bada likha aadmi hu mujhe to kisi cheez ki zorot nahi hai you might be successful for one year you might be successful for another ten years but later on you will see your kids will not be your kids your property will not be your property and you will see that the people who gave time to Jamaat who gave time to Ibadat who gave time to these Jamaat activities you will see them flourishing and ever successful this is not the experience of one year or two years for hundred years we have seen these things please always remember Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen ayah allah talab bin aslaziz in your prayers he loves you more than you think he cares you more than you think kal bhi kuch Khudam thi maine derkhasat ki thi try to make a file try to keep a light a letter not a letter try to keep writing letters to Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen faridwa choti choti baato pe Hazoor se aap mashura liya karey ke Hazoor maine aise aise log dekhiye hai jo kahate hai Hazoor maine apni gaadi pehle meri gaadi teen so pound wali thi ab maine badal ke Allah ke fadhl se pahish so pound wali leli hai Hazoor dua karey ke isme barqat daale aur bada pyara duaon ka xat Hazoor ki taraf se aata hai ye xat save karte jaye let your parents be proud of yourself if you are married person let your wife and children be proud of yourself that you have a close relation with Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen ayah allah talab bin aslaziz sir sir do we have ten minutes question answer are we don't have time okay any question about Hazoor's activities but remember I am not an official spokesman of Hazoor I am a very ordinary person like yourself the only thing is I live close by there Naveed Sahab kuch firmana cha rahi hai
no okay we can if we can't hear the question we'll just reiterate it on the microphone
okay oh Jazakallah Any question ji sir
would you like to repeat the question for everybody or should I
please please
so did everybody hear the question no okay so the question was that we know that Hazrat Khalifa Masih Rabi rahmulillah's favorite poet was Mirza Galib so besides of course Mubarak Siddiqui Sahab who is Hazoor ayah ghul talab bin aslaziz's favorite poet
okay Jazakallah saza I love I appreciate Naveed Sahab is here whatever else he Naveed Sahab will translate that for you Naveed Sahab is there okay okay I'll read a verse and you translate that yeah let's see that
oh dear
hai woh kafle no it's very easy very easy just listen hai woh kafle nikhaton noor ke hai ye walwalay shauke majboor ke hum saray rah guzaray tarab zare dil pasak ista khade hat multe reh
oh the depth of my love in the heart of my senses
beautiful yeah yeah that's right yes once I read it somewhere and you know the translator what he said he said well the poet is saying that I have some personal problems which I don't want to discuss openly in public so this is this is beautiful okay your question was yes Hazrat Khalifa Masih Rabi ayah allah talab bin aslaziz he of course he was a great poet he loved poetry and as you rightly mentioned Hamojuda Hazoor bhi Hazoor loves all Ahmadi poets and Hazoor do love some poets when I last time sat with Hazoor and my question was ke Hazoor hum jaise logon ko to bade gham hoteh hai Hazoor kya aapko bhi koi gham ya fikr hoteh hai to Hazoor ne ek shaar ka share pad ke sunaya tha thik hai Jazakallah agar aapka sawal ka precise jawab na mile to uski ek wajah ye bhi ho shakti hai there are few things whatever basically I say here it is kindly pre-approved in a sense that it is published in Al Fazel and everywhere so ji ji sir ji ji aapne sir acha ha ta na maine maine ye likha tha ke main bhi xamoosh ho gaya kyu ke uske ghar ke qarib thana tha actually in poetry you say things metaphorically that because of course ji ho gaya ji
translate that for the rest
sir maine jawab diya hi nahi aap translate kya karey vo you know as I said Hazoor ne ye likha huwa tha ke mere ghar ke qarib thana nahi hai ha masjid zaroor hai shayad main aap masjid se darte hu lekin main mushairi me a jaunga that was the answer of Hazoor ji ji that young boy
Waalaikumsalam small question we don't have Urdu as a language if we are ever blessed with the chance to meet Hazoor in mulaqat do you advise us to try and speak Urdu so we can hear Hazoor's answer in his native tongue or try and speak English
I think Hazoor because he Hazoor he Hazoor is easy in both languages so whatever language you prefer but of course jaise aap Urdu bolte hai woh zyada pyari lagti hai thik hai na laga hai jaise koi pathan Urdu bol rahi you know
Assalamualaikum my name is Damon question I want to ask is how much sleep does Hazoor get
Hazoor what's the question
how much sleep
how much sleep Hazoor gets
yes that's he's really busy
okay now again because this is a personal question but once I asked a person who is very close to Hazoor a very close very very close to Hazoor he said that Hazoor reads very long tahajjud nafals and doas and when he goes to home he has so many letters with him so simply speaking I will say four thirty is namaze fajr nowadays so of course before four thirty if someone is reading namaze tahajjud and then getting ready namaze isha is half past nine and even after namaze isha if something important or gets from outside it continues so if you say from half past three in the morning to half past nine kitne ghante bante hai ji koi mathematician betha ho to yes so very little very little ji any other question
do you know if Hazoor has spoken of any English poets that he holds in high esteem
not that of I know not that of I know but this thing I know that on whatever topic you speak whatever topic you speak Hazoor would know about that so I will say that of course Hazoor must have read so many of these English and Urdu and Persian and Arabic poets Hazoor so many times Hazoor mentions some verses which I have never even heard so yes that's all I can say that but any topic if you are a scientist if you are a philosopher any 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 field you have Hazoor would know about that and Hazoor would talk about that ji Waalaikumsalam
so I'm from Baltimore Jamaat and I think about a month ago we had Amir Sahab come and talk to us Amir Sahab USA and one of our elder members as you know Hazoor is coming on tour of the US and he's visiting Baltimore Jamaat because we have a new Masjid Insha Allahu to inaugurate it and he asked Amir Sahab if he knew some of Hazoor's personal favorite foods and Amir Sahab wouldn't tell and I know you spent a lot of time with Hazoor do you know of any of Hazoor's favorite foods
very good sir can you please tell me the gist of his question
he said do you know of what Hazoor's favorite foods are
Hazoor's favorite food okay it's a very good question actually some I mean of course I mean the brief answer is that Hazoor loves seafood Hazoor loves seafood aur woh jo kya hoteh hai prawns hoteh hai prawns Hazoor loves that once I was sitting with Hazoor and Hazoor noticed that I was trying to not to eat prawns that Hazoor said that don't you eat it these they are very delicious to maine ka Hazoor mujhe to inse dar laga hai maine kabhi try ni kiyeh then Hazoor very graciously he gave me aur maine woh usko aise khaya jaise woh TV me nahi dekha the deer karna ke koi jaise badi mushkil si cheez to bate ni bhi Hazoor loves Hazoor by the grace of Allah all do Hazoor has so many pressures dekhiye ek baap koi ho jaise ek baap ho aur uske samje char bete ho do bete do beti hai main misal de raha hu koi beti aaye aur woh batae ke abu main apne ghar me khush nahi hu koi beta aaye ke abu mujhe fala banda tanh kar shukta hai aap us baap ke dil ki haal samay shakte hai Hazoor is the father of all Jamaat-e-Ahmediyah people living in two hundred two countries Hazoor ko har vakh aisi khabe milte reti hai aur aafreen hai Hazoor pe ke jab woh Hazoor hume milte hai to Hazoor apne gham samane wale bande ko pata nahi chalne dete hai Hazoor uski dil joey ke liye baate karte hai aur Hazoor ke mizaq ka ek vaquia main aapse share karna chahta hu ab main pichle din hu you know few weeks or maybe few yeah few weeks few weeks ago the members of TI College they asked me that I should go to Hazoor and we should hold a picnic and because Hazoor is also the member of TI College so Hazoor should come there and we should play cricket and this and that we should do barbecue maine unko kaha ke yaar aap mujhe kyun kah rahi hai aap khul jaye na hai aap mujhe aisi cheezon ke liye aage kyun kar rahi hai kyu ke Hazoor itne bhi they said no 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 you go there okay I said okay I'll go there and darte darte main gaya and I had my pen and paper with me and I said Hazoor log kah rahi thi unhone mujhe bhijja hai main nahi aana cha raha tha mujhe pata hai Hazoor ki macrufiyat ka to Hazoor kya ye mumkin hai ke kisi din hum hadiqaatul mehdhi me mojood ho TI College ke membran aur hum waha khel rehhi hu ab logo ne mujhe kaha tha ke ja ke Hazoor ko kahna hai that we want to hold a picnic but I didn't want to use this word picnic jalsa is coming Hazoor is so busy and I should go go and say Hazoor let's do picnic hazoor ne kahna hai ke abhi aap thik ho main aap namazon ke liye kah raha hu jalson ke liye kah raha hu saray and you are saying let's go to picnic so I changed my wording Hazoor said I said Hazoor if we are there we are playing and Hazoor comes there and Hazoor ne ka acha aapka mazte me picnic kar li jaye I said yes Hazoor this is what I wanted to say Hazoor ne ka acha picnic picnic to maine ka ji aur Hazoor ne farmaya hai ke kya khail hai picnic ke baad fir cricket match ho jaye I was so happy I started maine ka maine maine likha cricket uh picnic cricket yes aur Hazoor ne farmaya aur kya khail hai ke uske baad fir hum shakar pe chale jaye I was so happy ke main picnic ke liye itna dar raha tha and Hazoor is suggesting that we should go for hunting to I showed I I wrote picnic Hazoor could see Hazoor was sitting here picnic Hazoor say okay picnic and cricket and shakar acha main visualize kar raha tha ke cricket khel reh hai you know shaar to dreamy hoteh hai I was dreaming that Hazoor is on bat line betting line and I'm coming like Shahida Faridi And I'm coming like Shahida Faridi to the wall. And CNN and BBC, they are covering and they are taking my interview. That how you can do such a good bowling and this and that. Hazoor said, "And when the sun rises, what do you want? Barbecue?" I was so happy. I thought that Hazoor is giving me instructions. I said this. I wrote barbecue. Hazoor says, "You see dreams. I'm not going anywhere." And then Hazoor explained. Hazoor said, "Look, now by the grace of Allah, the work of Jamaat is progressing day and night and with great speed."
Can you translate the punchline?
Punchline, what was that, sir?
The punchline given on any...
Oh, yes. Yes, my dear brother, yes. Yeah, the poet is saying that I'm not feeling well. Please remember me in your prayers. What I'm saying, when I said to Hazoor that can we kindly hold a picnic? So Hazoor said that, "Okay, you mean picnic? And after that, should we play cricket match?" I said, "Yes." And I was writing everything. And Hazoor said that after that, should we go for hunting? I said, "Yes, please, that will be great." So I was writing everything. And then Hazoor said that when the dark prevails, we should hold barbecue. And I was imagining everything. And I wrote everything. And when I wrote everything, Hazoor said that you keep dreaming. I'm not going to come anyway. So, then Hazoor explained that the reason is that now by the grace of Allah, on daily basis, members are coming in groups from different Jamaats. New Ahmadiyyas are coming. Murabbiyans are coming. And Hazoor said that even today you can see that a big coach is parked. Now, I said, "Hazoor, yes, I know. A group has come from Germany." So Hazoor said that I can give you time out of the time of local people. But when is the matter of people or guests coming from abroad? Of course, they have first priority. So this is something, you have this privilege, that people living in UK, when they give application to see Hazoor, we as a Sadr, we need to, I mean, write a recommendation that this person has not met Hazoor for last three years. Only then comes. But when you go there, of course Hazoor knows that he's here only for short time and you do get time. Jee, last two questions, if anyone asks. Jee.
So last one.
Assalamualaikum, Zishan Ahmed, Philadelphia. My question is related to Hazoor's movement in the UK, like when he goes from Fazal to Bethel Fatu and all this stuff. So, what's the protocol? Kind of, I mean, he does get police security also over there? Like roads are blocked or is everything not, life flows normally?
No. Jazakallah. His question is that when Hazoor goes from Bethel Fazal to Bethel Fatu, is there any special protocol like police or road blockage and this and that? As I told you in the beginning, Hazoor is the most extraordinary person I have ever met who loves to behave like ordinary people. So Hazoor, when Hazoor goes to Bethel Fatu, normally two, three cars are in front of him and two, three cars behind him. And they go and they follow just the rules of the land. And not only in this thing. Hazoor, wherever Hazoor is, you know, if you sit with Hazoor and if you try to tell him that, "Hazoor, I have seen when you went to America or you went to Canada, you got this protocol." Very quickly, Hazoor tries to bring, because Hazoor loves to remain humble. Suddenly, Hazoor will start saying that, "You know, when I was in Africa, sometime we had this, this, this difficulty. Sometime we did not have the milk to make tea. Sometime we had to bring water from that." So, whenever you speak to Hazoor, Hazoor loves to keep you relaxed. And one thing, I have seen even a person on a very high post, he goes to see Hazoor. And if a person who is doing nothing, he has no abilities and capabilities, Hazoor will give him same time, same affection, same love. And to be honest, this is the only, only, only example, only example in the world. One person, he said he went to make his passport out of Pakistan I'm talking about. And when he reached to the window of, you know that Pakistani passport, they said, "You have not signed here. Can you please sign here?" He said, "What's that?" He said, "You just have to sign here. That is a declaration that I believe that Mirza Ghulam Ahmed Qadiyani so and so." He was not true. And you know, this person, he was a learned man. He has done, he has done PhD. But he's more than PhD. He's a very knowledgeable man. He said, "Hang on. You're asking me to sign here that I do not believe that this person is a righteous person." He said, "I have heard this name first time in my life. I don't know this person. Why should I sign here that I believe that he's not the right man or he's not the righteous person?" They said, "Well, this is only formality. You just sign here and you will get your passport." He said, "I will not sign here. I don't know who is Mirza Ghulam Ahmed. I have never seen him. I have never listened to him. I have never read him. Why should I write it that he is a false person?" They said, "You can't have your passport." He said, "Okay, if you don't want to make my passport, I'll go back. I will not sign here." He went out and he asked people that, "Who is this person? Who are Ahmadiyyas? Who are Qadiyanis?" Someone, they said that they have one Murabi here. Go and see him. He went. He saw him. He saw MTA and he listened to the sermon of Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen, Ayahulullah, Talab bin Aziz. This is the last thing which I'm going to say today. He listened to the sermon of Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen, Ayahulullah, Talab bin Aziz. And after some time, he went to passport office. He gave the application. And the same person was there. He smiled at him. He said, "I told you to sign it. Your passport will be made." He said, "Yes, I've signed it." He said, "You haven't signed it." He said, "I have, I have accepted Ahmadiyyat. In the religion, I have written Ahmadi. I have seen them. I will not sign here." And he became Ahmadi. Now, this is one example. I know so many people who just listen to Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen, Ayahulullah, Talab bin Aziz's sermon or they met Hazoor and they accepted Ahmadiyyat. We are very fortunate. Please remember Hazrat Amirul Mu'mineen, Ayahulullah, Talab bin Aziz, in your prayers. Thank you all. You gave us a lot of time. I wish you happiness. I wish you love. I wish you all the blessings. I thank you very much. Sadr Sahib gave me a duty to look after me. His name is, I think, Imam Rabbani Sahib. I will give, he's not here. I will give him 200 out of 100. And to your arrangement, Sadr Sahib, I will give you 1,000 out of 100. Everything to the perfection. You didn't say anything to people that he's coming to love.
No, no.
Okay. You were so passionate. Allah, you're very Jazakallah. Jazakallah.
Assalamualaikum. Bismillah. We have a word to recognize and so you can remember us fondly, we hope. And so this is for you, Saviki Sahib.
Jazakallah.
And also this to memorialize your visit to this unique camp. This is a bear with fish in his mouth.
Jazakallah.
And also our Ijtama t-shirt.
Jazakallah.
Before you lead us in Dua, you came with the blessings of Hazoor, so we would like and also his Salaam. So on behalf of all of us here, myself and all Khudam at this Ijtamaam, if you have the opportunity to InshaAllah see Hazoor again, then would you please convey our Salaam and Waalaikumsalam to Qalifa-i-Tul Masih, InshaAllah? Jazakallah. Please lead us in Dua.
Join me inside, please.